We'll get this meeting underway, so for Councilwoman, please go to your seats. We appreciate it. And if we can turn our cellphones off, we really appreciate it. And it's time that everybody would stand. And Sean Hatch, why don't you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Sean, come forward.
It's all very much now.
I proudly pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to ask Councilwoman Stanley to lead us in prayer. Councilwoman?
Thank you. Great and gracious God, we pause before you tonight because we know that you will hear our prayers. Open our hearts and our ears and our hearts so that we may think honestly and speak wisely. Make us ready to listen to others so that we may work with order, peace, moderation, and patience. We are grateful for the blessings that you give this, the great city of Danbury, and these United States. And Lord, we ask for your continual blessing for the men and women in our armed forces who risk their safety to safeguard our freedom around the world. They need our prayers tonight and always. Amen.
Well said, Councilwoman. I just want to let you know we're working on the sound system tonight, and we have the technicians with us, and that means everything's going to work perfectly. And we're not going to be able to recreate the problems we've been having for the last 22 years. So, because that's just how we roll here. With that, I'm going to ask any member of the public wish to come forward and address members of the council this evening? Does any member of the public wish to address Mrs. Mitchell? Just a reminder, you must be resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury, and you must speak about something that's specifically out of the agenda. Ms. Mitchell is a taxpayer. Excuse me, one second. Let's hold up one second. Certainly, Paul Roll.
Arcanti.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Eevdabichi.
Here.
Riley. Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Cola.
Here.
Negashet.
Present.
Halas. Cabo.
Present.
Sadi.
Present.
Iskanti.
Present.
Trombetta.
Present.
Napp.
Here.
Nero.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Shunis.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Skazafaba.
Present.
Taischol.
Okay, there'd be nineteen present, two absent. Actually, there's three. Eighteen present and three absent. For the record, we reflect the following. Councilman Riley has had a successful surgery, but he is on the mend, not up to obviously coming to a meeting, but we certainly sent him our positive thoughts and prayers as he begins to work on his recovery. And I know that he has acquired a couple times at my office, just for all you folks to know, he's doing really well, and he wants to... Mrs. Me here is a woman of the week, or a woman of the month. But he's looking good, so things have gone well for him. Councilman Halas, as you know, also has had surgery. I believe Councilman Trombetta and Councilman Stanley, he's on the mend also.
Glenn Hill.
Glenn Hill. And he...
He's supposed to come home tomorrow.
He's going to come home tomorrow, so I'm sure he's chomping at the vent. We wish him a speedy recovery also. And Councilman Perkins is at work this evening. So that completes the goal. And now we'll go to the public speaking. As I mentioned earlier, the first thirty minutes of all city council meetings are reserved for public speaking. You must be resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury, just as a council. Mrs. Mitchell, you have a vote.
Margaret Mitchell, Park Place, Main Street. I'm a taxpayer. I just wanted to thank everybody in every department. I read the department reports and read the flooding and what you've done, and I know a lot of people were very grateful that 311 was kept open so that when they had concerns, there was a live human being there to talk to them. And I think everything went as well as it could. I would like us to move forward and clean the tributaries and then find money someplace to do some things because this has been going on for my whole life. And I went to the 50th class reunion. They had all the pictures of the flood of 55 because that was a real character builder for those of us that lived through the flood of 55 and did go to school and worked in Minnogee and so on. So, thank you to everybody. I wanted to say thank you because most of the time you hear the criticism and you don't get much praise. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Anybody else wish to address the council's seat? Seeing none, then we'll go on with the regular few announcements for the council. As many of you may or may not know, our assistant, Elisa, has been out in an emergency the last two days, so I don't have her on schedule at events, so I've got rid of a couple of them, just so you can write them down so I'll go slow. Thursday, October 6th, is the firefighter in the year event by the Exchange Club that is usually held in... It's held this year by the Spucchi in the league. Did you find a good phone? Did you finally get a good phone?
Finally. I'm trying to figure it out.
All right. Saturday morning, the council and members of the public that are watching today could join me at 9:00 a.m. for our flag raising for the Columbus State Weekend for the Italian American Club. It'd be nice to have a little bit of a turnout. It's kind of a... It's a nice, quick event. We don't want to be too disruptive, but it's good to see everybody there. Obviously important for the Spucchi. And of course, that day is the Columbus State Dinner Dance later that night at the Italian American Club. The DHS Athletic Hall of Fame is scheduled for 10/21st at 6:00 p.m. That's typically held in the Amber Room, as well as almost all other events that are happening this month. We have the firefighters. I have Speaker Carroll here with the debate for that. It's the fifteenth. As tended to is the open house at the fire department. Members of the public are watching this evening. Councilpeople that have children or grandchildren, and they want to bring them, they'll sort of meet the firefighters and look at all the apparatus. If you're taxpayers and want to see where millions of dollars go every year, you're happy to go. We'll see all the nice toys and cheap torches. But it's also an important day to put people in touch with fire safety and obviously fire prevention. Fire marshals should be there. They do a really good job. It's a good day. Are we going to do the bucket truck?
No, we're not sure yet.
Okay.
No.
No, okay. This year, we will not be hoisting people under 10 feet of water. Captain Ward veterans are having their 65th anniversary. That's on Sunday, October 30th at 1:00 p.m. Going to be held in the Spucchi, and you can see Richie Raymond, or Tom Sadi for info for tickets. And we have the hat... Mike Halas has his annual juvenile diabetes fundraiser. It's a huge event and encourages all the council to show up from the Halas Farm. It's a very well-done event. I'm campaigning for the kids. All the money that's raised there goes to the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. And that is held, of course, I have no idea of the date, but I believe it's October 23rd, right? It's a Sunday. It runs from about 11 to about 4:00. And it's a really good day. So, if you look for something to do with the kids, bring them over there, and it's free of charge. So, we just ask that you make a donation to the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. That is by no means a list of all the items that are happening here in Danbury in the month of October, but that'll give you a good start. Of course, I don't have a list of any birthdays or anniversaries, so if you have a birthday this month or anniversary, I wish you a happy birthday and happy anniversary. And finally, Mr. Seaberry has a new... Is the current's birthday this week? Chief?
Yeah.
He's looking Frankie. October 9th is your birthday?
Yeah.
Happy birthday to you. And Councilman Seaberry has a new addition to his family. Tyler Harris Smith was born in what day, Councilman?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. A new baby grandson for Seaberry family. Congratulations, Councilman. Councilman Sadi?
Yeah. Maybe more than that. Only five?
Fifth birthday anniversary. October 8th. Congratulations, Councilwoman. Happy birthday to you. Is there anybody else? Shay? Shay Negashet, Monica Negashet's anniversary is on October 23rd. Congratulations. Mike Halas, 35th anniversary, what day?
Well, 36.
36.
36.
What's the date on that?
October 4th.
October 4th.
Tonight.
Tonight!
Yay!
Where are you? You're at a city council meeting. We're not at dinner rooms.
36 years.
All right, simple, done with the announcement. Is there anybody else? God bless you. All right, Mr. President, give me the minutes, please.
May your honor, I'd like to make a motion. It may wait the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file, and the legislative assistants office.
Second. Most made second by Councilman Negashet. Are there any changes, deletions, or corrections to the minutes as designed? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and accept. It's all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. In the opposed, motion carries unanimously. This majority leader can we add the consent calendar, please? Yes, sir, you may.
Consent calendar, October 4th, 2011.
2011.
To be followed. Number one, receive the communication and approve the appointment to come up to M. Hofstadter as a member of the planning commission for the term to expire January 1st, 2014. Number three, receive the communication and refer to the application to the water and sewer extensions at 30 Reynolds Road, Assessor's Lot H-08105 and H-08106 to the City Engineer and Planning Commission for reports. Number six, receive the communication and adopt the resolution that will allow the city of Danbury to apply for and accept funding from the state senate department of public health, which will allow the city to continue its emergency planning and response activities. This funding, which will not exceed $56,324, covers a time period from August 10th, 2011 through August 9th, 2012, and requires no local match. Number seven, receive the positive reports to City Engineer and Planning Commission and approve the request for the time extension of sewer extension for Orchard Shopping Center 67 Newtown Road. The approval of this application is subject to the applicant meeting. All requirements of both engineering and public utility departments and all plans and documents conform and contend acceptable to the corporation process office prior to recording. That serves as the consent calendar for our 4th report.
You've a fine job, Mr. Seaberry.
See you, right.
All right. With your pleasure, Councilman Mr. Napp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Most made second by Mr. Keller. Any discussion about the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and accept. It's all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. In the opposition, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please. Item one was placed on consent. My bad. Fair. Madam Clerk, item two.
Permission naming a Pocono Lane bypass road. Dear President... Dear President Cabo and council members, we are in receipt of a petition from more than seventy residents of the Pocono Lane area neighborhood requesting that the bypass road built by the city between Pocono Lane and Mountain View Terrace be named Neil's Way. As you may recall, after years of traffic issues, accidents, and vehemence by the state of Connecticut who had, Mayor Mountain and I worked with area residents, and with the cooperation of Gary Michael Sr., we were able to obtain property necessary to construct the much-needed bypass road. This same but very important road remains unnamed, and as such, a group of residents are petitioning to name the road after the late Neil Van Valkenburg. It was Mr. Van Valkenburg who first suggested to his daughter Linda Van Valkenburg that she begin a petition to try to convince officials to address this issue. She did that and so much more to bring this issue to the forefront. Mr. Van Valkenburg died last year, and to honor his memory and his concern for this neighborhood, we respectfully request that the city council refer this petition to the appropriate departments to begin the process for naming this road Neil's Way. Thank you for your time, and we are available to respond to any questions you may have. Truly, Tom Sadi and Peter Nero, Fourth Ward Council.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, with your pleasure, Councilman Mr. Trombetta.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication and refer this to the planning commission for report.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Resolution, Savings Bank of Danbury Health and Human Services. To Honorable Mark Mountain from the council, to counsel from David St. Clair, Director of Finance. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to apply for and accept funding through the Savings Bank of Danbury Foundation. This funding, not to exceed $10,000, will be used to support oral health care services at the three school-based health centers and will be utilized during the 2011-2012 school year. There is no local match required. The city council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting.
With your pleasure, on the side of the city council. Mr. Negashet?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and adopt the resolution allowing the City of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to apply for and accept funding from the Savings Bank of Danbury Foundation.
Most made second by Mr. Shunis. I just want to point out in your agenda consequently, you'll see something called an impact statement. This is a mission to buy Mr. St. Clair to provide a little more detailed information about said grants that have been applied for and their impact is to the city and how they've been acknowledged and been used. So with that, we'll second any discussion about the grant. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and accept. It's all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. In the opposition, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item five, please.
Resolution. To Honorable Mark, Mayor Town, City Council, from David St. Clair, Director of Finance. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Health and Human Services Department to apply for and accept funding from the Union Savings Bank Foundation. The funding, not to exceed $10,000, will be used to support oral health care services at the three school-based health centers and will be utilized during the 2011-2012 school year. There is no local match required. The city council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at its next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, Councilman? Councilwoman Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Martin Mountain or Scott Law, Director of Health, to apply for and accept funding from the Union Savings Bank Foundation for the funds to support oral health care services at the three school-based health care centers.
Second. Most made second by Mr. Seaberry. Any discussion about the second? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. It's all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. In the opposed, signify by saying aye. I have the motion carries unanimously. Item 67 are on consent. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
And Hackling 4 in order.
Mr. Napp, would you like to make a motion? Did you see that, Mr. Seaberry?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, with reading of the minutes of the meeting first. Second.
Most made. Any objections away from reading the minutes before the council? Seeing no objection, then we'll consider the minutes. They're read as all members have copied. I will now to make a main motion against Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the report or present it to a public hearing.
Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Good work on the council. Mr. President, the public reports, please.
Your Honor, my one last chance to make this speaker for a reason. I'd like to make a motion that we read the departmental reports. We read the departmental reports, as all members have copies. The copies are on file in the legislative assistants office.
Second. Most made second by Mr. Negashet. Discussion of the departmental reports. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and accept. It's all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. In the opposition. Before we adjourn, I want to recognize Mr. Skazafaba, who had a birthday on Sunday that we forgot about over this morning. Now that he recognized me. It's time to extend all committees and entertain a motion to adjourn. Second by Mr. Keller. All in favor, adjourn it. Say aye. Aye. For the 2011 meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission, we'll open the meeting this evening by calling the roll. Mr. Keller is absent. Mr. Uyce.
Here.
Mr. Manuel.
Here.
Mr. Cermanera is absent.
Here.
All these here. We haven't seen any alternates because we don't have all this. And congratulations, Helen, some regular member of the planning commission. Good to have you on board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. For the record, please remember that our regular, the scheduled meeting for November 2nd has been canceled. Our next meeting will be October 19th. Commission members, hopefully you received via email the minutes of the May 31st, 2011 meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion made. Will you second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Joel?
I'm not sure I can vote. I did listen to tapes, but that was the meeting I was absent to.
Okay. We'll show you as an extension for that. Okay, we're going to move right to our public, the public hearing portion of our agenda. The first public hearing, 7:30 p.m. City of Danbury by Dennis I. Eltern, Planning Director, application to amend Chapter 2, Section B7 of the City of Danbury Subdivision Regulations Downtown Redevelopment Zone Fees. By the way, it should actually read Downtown Revitalization Zone Fees. Is that correct, Danbury?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
So that's technically a typo.
We've like copied the notes and it's been worked, but...
Hmm.
It's what we're calling a Scribner's error.
Scribner's error. That sounds more official. Let me just read the public legal notice. Just so you guys know, this is a public hearing on a particular matter, and given that it's a public hearing, the public can speak, we're required to publish this in the paper that we're going to have this. And so what we're going to do now is we read the legal notice so we can prove to the world that we did put it in the paper and the public did have an opportunity to come speak. Notice is hereby given to the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury. We'll hold a public hearing commencing at 7:30 p.m. October 5, 2011, in the city council chambers and city hall, 155 Year 11. We consider the following matter. City of Danbury by Dennis I. Eltern, Planning Director, application to amend Chapter 2, Section B7 of the City of Danbury Subdivision Regulations Downtown Redevelopment Zone Fees. Parties of interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time. Arnold Lee Finaldi Jr., your chairman, published September 24th to September 30th, 2011. So, in theory, if you were a member of the public and you picked up the paper and you read this, you would have the right to come here and speak and have an audience and say anything you want about this particular matter. Now, this particular matter is very boring. It's a...
Nice.
It has to do with changing certain fees that we charge the public, so this isn't likely to create a tremendous amount of excitement in the community. So I don't think there's anyone here big enough to speak on that, but just trying to give you an idea as to what that is all about. So, having said that, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? And I'll turn it right over to Jennifer.
Mr. Chairman, you have a staff report dated October 3, 2011 from Dennis Eltern. What the city submits tonight is two changes. One, to the zoning regulations, which is a referral on the agenda, but an amendment to the subdivision regulations, which will reduce by 50% the permit fees for the proposed development, for any development within the downtown revitalization zone. And if you recall, earlier this summer, the city created the downtown revitalization zone that was recommended by the Main Street Renaissance Task Force. Part of that report recommended reducing fees within that specific zone. So what this amendment does is reduce it by 50% the fees for any property within the revitalization zone for subdivision, which is what we're discussing tonight.
Now, there's a news story right there. Reducing government fees, right? Right there. When was the last time any fee in this town ever went down? So that's worthy of notice, but again, we're trying to encourage people to do things downtown as the thrust of this whole thing. Questions for Jennifer, commission members? Thanks, Jen. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Jennifer, we don't need any sign off from any city department on this particular matter, do we?
No, we do not.
So unless there's anything else, commission members, on this very simple matter, we can actually close this public hearing. Motion made by Mr. Manuel, seconded by Miss Hofstadter. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? This public hearing is closed.
Should we also move to have this added to Old Business for Consideration and Possible Action, number three?
Is that a motion, Ed?
Yes.
A motion made and seconded to move this matter to item three under our Old Business for Consideration and Possible Action. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? This matter will appear as item three on our old business agenda. It's a quick one. You just kind of move that one right through. You see how that... Unlike other ones, it takes a little longer. Okay, we're going to go right to our second public hearing this evening. 7:45 p.m. Hackney 2 Realty LLC, application for special exception for shared parking, 6466 West Street, the CL10 Zone, 6466 West Street. I'll skip the reading of the map number. Special exception, 717. I don't have any legal notice here.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Mr. Uyce.
I think you just have to copy that one.
There it is. Legal notice. Notice is hereby given to the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury. We'll hold a public hearing commencing at 7:30 p.m. on October 5, 2011, in the city council chambers and city hall, 155 Year 11. We consider the following matter. Hackney 2 Realty LLC, application for special exception for shared parking, 6466 West Street, the CL10 Zone, 6466 West Street. Skip beginning reading of the map number. Special exception, 717. Parties of interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time. Arnold Lee Finaldi Jr., your chairman, published September 24th, September 30th, 2011. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, sir?
Good evening. For the record, my name is John McFoy, Principal of KFM Engineering, Ridgefield, Connecticut. Begging for the applicant, Hackney 2 Realty, Starsville, New York, and the owner of the properties before you tonight. The property before you tonight, the application before you tonight is fairly simple. There are two existing properties, actually, there's three properties, but Liz is two. 64 and 66 West Street. They each have a building on them. At times, they've each been rented. Currently, 66 is rented and 64 is vacant. 64 is a large, there are two buildings, seven on here quickly. Here's William Street. having a cycling view on, but we were around 3, almost home on that process, and we realized that more to provide this secondary shared use, a different use during the weekend, and we need to ask for a special exception. I have a couple of things, some paperwork cleanup, to provide to you, and to provide to Jennifer, that she asked for. One was, we already had a cycling application in, but we decided that we needed to have a separate one, just for this change in use or expansion of use, and request for shared parking. Can you get out some copies, so if anybody has one here?
Thank you.
Top is the simple cycling application, which is a little abbreviated from what you might normally see, because the one with all the super details is on a pending moment to work on. But the key in what you have here are the two things that are attached to the back of it. The first one being a letter from Acme Realty acknowledging what they're trying to do, and the restrictions that it calls on the site, and the second one is the zoning charge, which relates to mixed uses, and how they, how they are envisioned to function, both on a weekday and a weekend. And in particular, it's that issue that changes the use for a weekend that requires us to come to you. And so, in that, this chart here.
Yes. Did you keep them for yourself?
I have, I have a whole bunch, I didn't know how many.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, exhibit A.
Fair enough.
Okay. And basically, there'd still be a small church use during the week in 64, living to a maximum of 40-seat assembly, whereas on the weekend, there would be a 140-foot, 140-seat assembly, and it basically would require all the parking on both, both properties. And there would be no office use in 64 at that time, I mean, sorry, 66 at that time. That is, that is basically what is set up, and what is discussed, and was entered into a tentative agreement, but of course, then, assuming we get through all this. The only other thing going on is that we did just update our cycling a little bit, in regards to some comments that Jennifer had, where we met, we talked yesterday, met with her today, I met with engineering again today, and all it really boils down to is that we, in addition to these expansions, this area here, this is sort of existing conditions, this area here has sort of an unutilized area, so we're just basically expanding the parking. In addition to that, we're doing significant improvements along William Street, and improvements on, on West Street, and we're trying to bring the site as closely into performance with the current zoning rates as possible, and that we've been working with, with the agencies to reach that goal.
Mr. Chairman, and just so you understand, that's under the site plan reviews for SP-76-36 and SP-83-03, all of those improvements, but before the commission tonight is the shared parking. I just wanted that to be clear.
Thank you. Any questions, Senator?
Joel, go ahead. In the lease for 66 West Street, is the lease restricted as to hours of use in the lease?
It, it is not currently, but it will be written before that, and we've already talked about it. My opinion is, there was no provision either way, so it will be amended together.
Any questions, this time?
I, I, I don't quite understand how this building is, is made up. What's, what's on, what's on the inside of it? If you could go from 40 to 140 seats in the same building?
There's an assembly room that has 140 seats that would not be able to be used during the week.
Then there are. What's its use now?
Well, the current building right now is, is vacant, except.
Isn't that any there for a while, is it?
No, the last, I think, was the state Connecticut Employment Office, the state Connecticut Agency, they moved out several years ago, maybe four years ago. So this building is basically vacant, and they're going to fit it up, but they aren't going to fit it up until we get through this process. We have a schematic plan for this, that they're going to develop into full architecturals, assuming we can get these numbers to work, but we didn't know where we were going to end up parking wise.
Okay, so in number 66?
Which is the bigger of these two, is this one?
Okay. That's where the rest where you have the 140-seat lot for it?
Correct. And there, and there are, and 140, 140-seat meeting, 66, sorry, 64.
64.
64 is where we are going to have the churches, and there are several meeting rooms, and your regulations, under regulations, require the largest assembly room designates the parking count, and can't, they won't be able to use the largest one during the week, and then this morning, they have a smaller one, primarily for probably later after the week.
Is there, will there be any other use in that building?
There is a, there is a provision, they're not using the entire building, there is a provision for general office of 3,3454 square feet, that's the gross floor area of the general office. I think it's a church one, or something. Pardon?
34,000.
So it's 34,000.
33,000.
3454. I'm looking at it, and it's still really wrong.
Okay, okay.
But again, during the weekend, it'll be written in the ballot, at least, that's not being used during the week.
Mr. Uris.
I'm a little confused on the location, I thought I had this place, in the corner of Williams and West Street, and if you go right across Williams, there, you're running below it, is that right?
No. It's west of that, it's, it's up West Street's part of it.
Well, this building you're talking about is across from the courts.
Yes.
Yes.
In that picture.
I know where it's located. I am, I am. Well, I follow, yes, I have it.
It's right before the building with the apple.
Correct, that is correct.
At the M4.
There goes everything like.
It's not ours.
It used to work well.
Commission members, any other questions you wish to report this time?
I, I have a question about how you enforce against a tenant that has the use of the office space that he can't come in on a Sunday and do some work.
The office tenant could, it's on the.
No, no, no.
The church must kind of be cornered in the lease.
Night just.
He was, well, he's, he's protecting the church.
No, I'm talking about the offices, the office space.
Okay.
How do you keep, how do you keep the office tenant from coming in? He's got the key, he walks in, he's using it.
It's the same way that any of this, the same idea is that they can't use the assembly during the week, it's the same enforcement. The owner, the office tenant, tenants will be subject to the enforcement.
I, I see this as problematic, as from an enforcement standpoint.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
It's typical to what we've, over the past few years, we've had several of these types of shared parking arrangements, including over the summer with Union Savings Bank and the Connecticut Institute. If, if the use is operating during different times, and it's not supposed to, it becomes a zoning issue. And if we know that there's a parking issue out there, and the zoning enforcement officer investigates, and realizes that the church is operating during the daytime, or the office is operating during the week, you know, during the weekend, it's a zoning violation. That's, that's how it's enforced.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't worry too much about that, I mean, I work in a 215 house, a square foot office building, and weekends, there's three cars there, I'm not overly concerned about parking up being in the day, they went weekends, not very typical office business.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Joel.
And, and in actuality, there's one extra parking spot in this application, so if one car was in, in that building, it really would infringe on the minimum amount of parking spaces.
Correct. Correct. Any others wishing to report, commission members? Very much so. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Michael.
Yes. My name is Gary Michael, reside at 52 Deerville, Danbury, Connecticut, my own property at 70 West Street. I just want to state a couple of facts about the property and use. It's been dormant for a good number of years since it was the state unemployment office, and it's refreshing to see that somebody is doing something with the bar to, trying to facilitate getting a tenant using the property. My concern, the question is, I noticed that that portion of the property, I'm just concerned whether it's unpaid, it's an area where people would, by safer characters, occasionally spend some day and night, I was wondering if that's going to be with the cycling lid at night, so people would be able to go from 64 to 66, because that's not a very safe area as it sits right now. And the other concern, which is, gentlemen, I have, is when you say that there's going to be an assembly area for 140 people, that concerns me as far as the number of partners, I assume there are going to be partners on West Street, on William Street, on 64, and on 66. If you get 70, 80 people, you don't have a partner for that. But just want to be safe, I'm definitely in favor of this application to have shared parking, and then the application for a room center.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone else in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? I believe, Jen, this is another one where I'm waiting for the city departments to report anything, so.
If I could.
You may.
Respond to, to Gary's comment about the lighting. That can be addressed under the site plan, it's not really the purview of the commission tonight, because you're looking at the shared parking, the lighting is a site plan issue, and I'll certainly talk to John about that. And it is paved, just like here. It's paved in the back.
You can rebut it here.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, this is kind of way too many. As far as all that, we're going to clean all that up, I do know exactly what he's talking about back there, it's like a little private area, kind of people hide, and I've been out here inspecting the site. All that gets cleaned up, regardless of lighting, we currently don't have any additional lighting on the site proposed. If we do, we will have to go and work it out with the cycling application, either the last minute, and the one we currently have, or go back into revision. Do we have any additional lighting? There is some lighting. The real key is, the site's going to be so cleaned up from where it is now, that you don't have this little hidden area anymore.
Anything else, commission members? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Uris.
Chairman, if, if we have given approval on this, the approval cap could be crafted, this is a question, I would say, could be crafted, that any change in use of either of those buildings, or changes in the lease terms, which affect that change in use, will , in effect, void the shared parking that would require to come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jen.
That's actually.
Is that, and actually, I requested that note be up to the plans. So, so that if, if something happened about the restrictions, or we can use the office building in the lease, that would, well, I could make a.
Yes. If it went from, say, a change in use from office to retail, and the retail operates on the weekend, that certainly changes the dynamics, that's the grand special exception, and the regulations provide for that, and similar to one of the conditions we had for the Union Savings Bank, Connecticut Institute, we had some conditions in there, we can certainly craft something similar to that.
Would you have?
They would also encourage the unused portion of the, to be church building.
I'm not sure I follow.
The section of the church building is not going to be used, right?
No, it's, it's provisioned to be used as general office as a third potential, it doesn't matter in our calculations. Yes, it's shown in places, it's shown in all the chapters.
So you have during, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jen.
During weekday, you have at 64 West, which is the old unemployment office, you have 4,900 square feet of church, with 40 seats, okay, requiring 10 parking spaces, and then you have 3,400 square feet of office, okay, also requiring 10 parking spaces. This will be approved through the site plan, they have enough parking for that use for the two tenant spaces.
Correct.
Church and office during the weekday. The shared parking for the weekend is to increase the 40 seat during the week to 140 seats on the weekend.
I can't just buy it, it's strictly.
Not occupancy, restricting their time.
Well, you, you.
Yes.
Correct, it will restrict 64, and it will restrict the 39, or 3,400 square feet in 66, Lawson.
Right. And that opens up that entire parking lot, it's 30, it went down to 35 now.
35.
35.
And the only, and just one other thing, the owner did acknowledge it, he realizes that, he's entering into an reading of the campaign change, going back to, so.
I did have one third question, to the staff here, do you have other leases in effect in town now that restrict the time that tenants can use this space?
Yes, we do.
It says that you may not use this office, it's written in their lease, it's submitted to the planning department.
Yes.
It says that they may not use this lease during weekend office.
Correct. We have that for.
Resilience.
Well, we've done a couple of them, offhand, whether I have lease agreements there or not, I would imagine I do, but I know for a fact we have them for the Connecticut Institute and Union Savings Bank, because those were executed and submitted sharply, I think, they were granted.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have also, last, last year or year before, you did one on West Street.
Yeah, across the street.
That had some kind of power use for churches.
And that was for Department of Family and Children's Aid, with the Church of Christ.
And that is not going to be a problem, you're saying, so?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, if I could just pop this through for a second, you see what's, what's going on here, with the, as a land use board, we are one of the land use boards that regulate parking, and, and it's, it's no mystery to why, you just want to avoid a big parking mess. If you owned a piece of land, and you wanted to build a church on it, let's say, and you came into the City of Danbury and proposed that use, we want to be sure there was adequate parking there, to make sure that people aren't parking the street, or on the grass, or God knows where. So, so this whole exercise is nothing more than an attempt by the city government to make sure if they occupy that building as a church, or an office, or whatever, that there's adequate parking there, we don't create a big mess. That's essentially what we're doing, stated, stated simply in the plan. Now, there's all kinds of regulations and calculations that go into that, but just stated simply, that was what this whole exercise was all about. That's the conclusion, of course, as the folks came out.
That's what it's all about.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Uris.
Motion for closed public hearing.
Motion made in closed public hearing, any discussion? Here we go, I'll try your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Uris.
To move this to Old Business, item four.
Motion made and seconded to move this to item four on our agenda, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? See, we also use Robert's Rules of Order of Parliamentary Procedure here, so it sounds like we're blablabla, like we're real fast, but after a while, after you've been doing this for 12 years, it just kind of comes out of your head. So that's, don't want you to think we rushed through this, we actually do know what we're doing, rather than parliamentary procedure.
The chairman is speaking.
Okay. Thank you very much, since the public hearing is closed. We have nothing under our continuation of public hearings agenda, so we'll move right to Old Business for Consideration and Possible Action, item one, Danbury Mall LLC, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, application for special exception for wireless telecommunication facility, CT11816 in the CT20 Zone, Danbury Square Mall, 7 Baptist Avenue, F16015 and F17002, special exception 716. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Uris.
Since we have all received a copy of the draft resolution, or approval, I'll make the motion to approve this application as per the practice resolution dated.
September 27.
September 27.
Mr. Chairman, I just would note that I'm not going to vote on this resolution, so I did have a meeting.
Okay, I'm not going to record, show Mr. Manuel abstaining. Ms. Hostetter was seconded motion. Under discussion, I'll just, again, I don't know if you want me to do this or not, but at our last meeting, one of the, one of the things we regulate as a commission is cell, cell towers and antennas. So if you own a T-Mobile, or Nextel, or.
Horizon.
Horizon, rather, and you wanted to put up an antenna somewhere, we, that's something that has to pass this commission. So we had the public hearing last, last meeting, we heard it, they gave us all kinds of, you know, photographs as to where they're going to put it at the mall, and everything else, and we closed the public hearing, we gave Jennifer direction that we felt it was okay, she wrote a resolution, and now we're voting on the resolution to approve. So, I'm going to take a vote in one second, and assuming it goes through, the applicant will be free to go ahead and construct that cell tower, with an antenna around it.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to give him a caveat of being overruled by the site permission?
No, not the antenna.
That's cell tower, not a cell, I think they could do that. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the draft, draft resolution approval submitted in September 27, 2011, is there any discussion? Here we go, I'll try your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So that particular cellphone tower, or antenna, rather, you've seen power, has been approved. Okay, we move right to number two. Bowringer Engelheim, part of Suterburg, application for revised site plan approval for RDG Pilot Plant Replacement Project, according to Section 107, the zoning regulations, 39 Dry Ridge Road, 117001, special exception 317. Commission members, hopefully, you have received the draft resolution of approval on this matter, dated September 27, 2011.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Uris.
Unless staff just wants to review this, for sake of the audience, I will make a motion to a.
So I'm going to take a vote in one second, and assuming it goes through, the applicant will be free to go ahead and construct that cell tower, antenna, rather.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to give him a caveat of being overruled by the site commission?
No, not the antenna.
That's cell tower. I don't know. I think they can do that. Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the draft resolution of approval submitted dated September 27, 2011. Is there any discussion? Here we go. I'll try your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So that particular cell phone tower or antenna, rather, you see, has been approved. Okay, we move right to number two. Bowringer Engelheim Pharmaceuticals, application for a site plan approval for RDG Pilot Plant Replacement Project in accordance with Section 107, the zoning regulations, 39 Ridge Road, A17001, special exception 317. Commission members, hopefully you have received the draft resolution of approval on this matter dated September 27, 2011.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Uris.
And the left staff just wants to review this for the sake of the audience. I will make a motion to approve this application as per the draft resolution dated September 27.
Motion made, we are seconded. Seconded. So similar to what I just said about that antenna, we had several meetings about, you know, Bowringer Engelheim is an enormous pharmaceutical company, they've got a huge place, campus, 200 acres, mostly in Ridgefield, summers in Danbury, they wanted to expand their building and that came before us. And we had several public hearings, ultimately decided we were in favor of it. And again, Jennifer wrote the resolution to approve that use. So we're going to take a vote on that now and, and assuming that goes through, they're free to go ahead and get permits and go ahead and expand the building, just to give you a little bit of an idea as to what's going on.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jen.
As an aside for the audience, the town of Ridgefield is going through the same process and I believe last week, for last week, their planning and zoning commission approved their expansion as well. So they're anxious to get their permits going. They're still getting through the FAA at this point.
But this one's interesting because they're half in Danbury and half in Ridgefield. So these people have to be tortured by two different land use boards, Danbury, maybe tortured is too strong of a word.
Thank you.
Danbury and Ridgefield.
Tortured by Ridgefield, not by Danbury.
Okay, a motion has been, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the draft resolution of approval for the Bowringer Engelheim application, any more discussion? We take these meetings too, by the way, in case they have to be transcribed or in case we go to court and everything, everything I say is on the record and we take it to be transcribed. Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed.
I just for the same reason I abstained.
Mr. Manuel abstained, this draft resolution of approval is approved. We'll move right to item three, which was a public hearing we heard earlier, City of Danbury, NSI Eltern Planning Director, application to amend Chapter Two, Section B seven, City of Danbury subdivision regulations downtown revitalization zone fees. Looking for some guidance, Jennifer?
No, this needs to approve tonight.
Oh, that's right. What am I saying? Draft resolution to this.
No, this needs to approve the amendment with the note that it is a revitalization zone.
Considering the rezoning that we've already proved, I mean, the whole intent purpose of the rezoning of the revitalization zone downtown is to encourage development, this is just another step in that process, so I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion made for approval and seconded, any further discussion? Very good, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. This matter is approved. So what we just did was we approved a application to reduce fees for subdivision for certain things in the downtown revitalization area, obviously the long-term goal being to help revitalize downtown and encourage people to do so. So that's what that was all about. We'll go right to item four on our Old Business or Consideration of Possible Action. Again, the public hearing we heard earlier, Acme Two Realty LLC, application for special exception for shared parking, 6466 West Street in CL 10 zone, 6466 West Street, I'll skip the reading of that number, special exception 717.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Uris.
Noting for the audience that these things don't usually work this quickly.
Yeah, right. Yeah, this is.
This has to be a pretty straightforward application for shared parking. I would direct to have to draft an approval for this, with the caveat specifically related to lease stipulations for powers of operations of two different businesses and limitations that are on those and that no permit's been issued until such time as those be filed in the hands of planning zoner, zoning enforcement officer, or whatever is appropriate.
And the other thing you mentioned is, was that if those leases change, then the disapproval is no longer effective.
And those agreements would need to be filed on the land markets. We would require that prioritization of zone permits.
As long as the stipulation there is for changes of term use as well.
See, this one was interesting because when you think about parking a church, when do people go to church? Sunday or maybe Saturday, or the church might get used at night. When do, if it's a business office, when do they go there? Monday to Friday, eight to five. So, so what you try to do is, you know, bring those two ideas together and recognize that people that go to church, you don't go to church at the same time you go to work in an office and you try to sort of weave that into your parking regulations. That's what we're trying to do here.
And, and my original objection was the fact that I've been in many offices where we did work on Saturdays and Sundays, but now if you're going to write it into the lease and as the staff has assured us, if this has not been a problem in the past, then I'm doing, I feel it's good.
Was there a motion made? I'm sorry.
No, no, it's just guidance.
It's just guidance, right?
It's guidance.
Sorry, good enough. Okay, so you have your guidance, Jen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to skip right down to referrals. Eight three referral petition of the city of Danbury by NSI Eltern Planning Director for men's section 10 B two, zone regulations, downtown revitalization zone fees, zoning commission public hearing scheduled for October 11, 2011. I think we got a email today on this one, right?
Are you doing first?
It was dated October 4th.
The amendment is 38 three, yes, the amendment, zoning regulation.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, you have the same staff report that I approved.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
The same staff report that I went through earlier for the subdivision amendment is a joint report for the zoning amendment as well. So this reduces the fees as well. So.
All right, we give it a affirmative, affirmative recommendation.
Okay, motion for a positive recommendation? Sorry. Motion made seconded for positive, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Did you have any future planning or zoning people? I hope we didn't torture them.
I talked to them beforehand and I think.
I saw you.
I know, I'm trying to tell them what we're doing in nice simple terms. I think when I was 18 or 19, you know, we tried to figure out what's going on in their head, but hopefully we didn't scare them away.
Maybe we encouraged them to be a city planner.
I hope so.
This is very interesting on the right side.
All right, we're going to move right to item two, eight three referral petition of Madeline Ridge LLC, 2 Scottville Road, F 14124, for change of zone RA 40 to RMF 4, zoning commission public hearing October 11, 2011. Ms. Emmen, jury.
Mr. Chairman, you have a staff report dated October 4th. Does everyone have a chance to review the report? And Joanne handed out a map?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want me to go through or do you want to just talk about it?
Go ahead, go ahead, go through it. I did not have a chance to go through this report. Why don't you give us the brief summary?
Okay. The department received a petition, received a petition to rezonate parcel that's highlighted from RA 40 to RMF 4. The lot is .9 acres. Rezoning it to RMF 4 would possibly allow maximum of 10 dwelling units unless the applicant comes in for a housing incentive option, which allows him a maximum of 16 units. And of course, as you know, this all depends on the layout of the land, steep slopes, setbacks, things of that nature. The petitioner gave his reason for why he thinks that the petition should be granted. I won't read that, other than the fact that there's adjacent RMF properties to the west who believes that that's reason enough to rezonate to, from RA to RMF. Back in 2005, the commission received a similar petition to rezonate two lots, including this lot and the lot to the north, to the same RMF 4 zone. The petition was denied because, one, it didn't comply with the plan of conservation and development and there were steep slopes present on the site and there would be no transition to the RA 40 zone. This petition, because it does not include that northern lot, contains fewer concerns, although it is still noted that it does, it does not comply with the plan of conservation and development.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Uris.
I want to jump in on the overview of this idea of there's now some sort of a buffer. There's really no buffer in this application. The lot that is not being requested to be rezoned at this time, I leave us four, that's in RA 40. So you're still abutting RA 40 with this new best application. It's a question of how far do you want to approach on single-family housing? And when I initially read this application, I thought, oh, well, you've got the condos over here, you've got the condos over there, what's the big deal? And I would have looked at it and all the big deal is this approaches on that block of RA 40. That's just pushing it out. So, you know, no matter what you do, one lot, two lots, five lots, there's no buffer, no buffer whatsoever. And I think to approve or recommend this rezoning would be a terrible disservice to the people that live in that neighborhood, that, you know, bought in that neighborhood as single-family housing, to further approach this multi-family sprawl into their neighborhood. So I'm going to tell you, right now, I'm going to be opposed to this unless somebody comes up with a really convincing argument.
Of course, staff does not take a position either way, please.
Uh, no, staff does know that it does not comply with the plan of conservation and development.
We have a question. How is RMF 40 up the line and then there's stuff on it? It's all, it's all.
Everything from here down and then within this dotted line here is all RMF 4. Has an authority, but still comments, same as core.
But everything up on what's allowed extension is RA 40.
Sorry. Right, so whereas the line question is, is this.
Is that a little check?
Oh.
You know, the thing is, if you look at this, it says, is that buffer lot?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That is where the one-family house is.
Yeah.
And they're both owned by the same entity.
And that was a so-called buffer lot was one that was included in the last application.
Yes.
But if my condition is not a buffer, it's RA 40. It's not a buffer, but it's to RA 40. The fact that it's owned by effectively the same party means it makes it even less of a buffer. I don't know if you can say it's less than zero.
Well, I mean, you're going to make a negative, a vote for a negative recommendation based on the fact that number one, it doesn't comply with the plan of C and D, and two, lack of an adequate buffer to protect the RA 40 up by the land.
And if I do, and it actually approaches all the RA 40.
Somebody else has been called.
I'll make that mention.
I'm sorry, Helen, did I interrupt you? I'm sorry, Helen. Heck of a lot of respect for our newest support on that.
I think the boundary that was to come off St. Paul Road and western wing boundary of this little X area, is that a road or is that just the boundary? Is there any, is there any access there?
Towards the back of the property?
Yeah, like I'm talking about over here.
No, no. That's just the zone line. There is no road back there. There is a driveway. What's back there now, Samuel's Court, I believe is constructed next door, where you see that long driveway coming, right here.
Here.
There's a driveway that goes up that sound of road, it's just a driveway. And initially, this was a single-family house that was rezoned, is it rezoned? Years and years ago, and that's where they put Samuel's Court, where the guard department.
There's a guard department's up in there.
Yes, and let's go commons right next door.
They were both rezoned.
Here, welcome. Did somebody want to make a formal recommendation, either positive or negative, or I wouldn't make that. But a motion to debate for negative rules been seconded?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, and ayes for negative recommendations. Opposed, this matter will get another negative recommendation. We have nothing under other matters or correspondence, and you can see the full reference only, so one thing left to do.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made seconded to adjourn, any discussion? Okay, signify by saying aye.
Aye, discussing.
No discussion.